Recording in progress.
Altered orders and regular meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call please.
Mayor Garn here.
Mayor Robert Carter here.
Councilmember Orange.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
Please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and no peruse to county jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the route M. Brown. Items requiring council actions now listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council, that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Any emails? And we will close public presentations. Welcome Supervisor Bushnell. Thank you for coming to the council. We were now wanting to consult the calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on? Hey, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So.
We have a motion and a second. Oh, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Yeah. Motion here is five zero. Staff reports and communication. City manager, page forty nine in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garn, members of the council. So staff did hold a meeting with members of the Humble Rotary Club just yesterday to discuss their concept for recreational non-motorized boating on the Eel River, ideally from Riedel over to River Lodge in Fortuna. But an interesting conversation, a lot of different pencil concept of integration with the Great Redwood Trails, different concepts there to allow for camping opportunities for boaters down the river, along with a bunch of different ideas. So we'll be working with that group that doesn't come in any city costs, but we're happy to provide them advice and encourage them on their way. The council also, council member Wilson, Mayor Carter and Mayor Garn's also attended a soft ribbon cutting for the Eel River Trail on the May twenty fourth. And that was sort of an event specifically for the schoolchildren for our Eel River Trail projects, which is slated to be completed towards October, November of this year. The event went very well. We had great ribbon cutting, some photos and whatnot were taken. And then councilmember Carter was able to take that material to the trails summit this past Saturday. So just want to give a special shout out to the attendance for that event. Work is also, as you may have noticed, over the last week, there's been a tremendous amount of work underway here in town, including right here near City Hall. This project specifically is specific gas and electric work that you may recall a couple of years ago that PGD kind of made a sudden announcement that there was no electrical capacity for new hookups in Fortuna, Riedel and Southern Humble. And so there has been a tremendous amount of work done on the Riedel substation. And now they're branching out to transmission upgrades in pure Riedel. Part of that project includes some new underground work adjacent here to City Hall, moving new power lines out along Second Avenue, Davis Street, Pacific, and eventually across the river to the north end of town and to the north portion of Riedel and north side of the river. So we're excited to see that project go, move forward. However, it is obviously very disruptive. There's been a lot of traffic interruptions. The parking lot is basically closed today. So we urge people to have patience with that project, but it's very good news for Riedel. We look forward to working with our partners in BG when the project is completed to make sure that the broader community as well where Riedel has power are doing hookups. With that, staff report is outlined in your packet. And staff is available to answer questions if you don't see them.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor Robert Carter. Um, no questions. It seems like the police have had a lot going on, but I guess that's two months worth of reporting. Then I do.
Oh, the possible.
I know he's here, but yeah, if you guys agree a bit about the possibility, it's worth it. It's not a good read.
Anyway, no questions from the thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Or. Councilmember Woodall? No. Anyone from the public have any questions for staff? Any emails or any emails? And let's see, I thought I had one. But, um. Well, if I don't, if I cannot remember. Oh, because they're going to be, when they do this work, let's say on Second Avenue, example, are they going to pave over it? They're going to get smoothed out in any way?
Yeah, so we certainly hope that will be the case. There will be trenching on Second Avenue. And it's going to be a mix of above ground and then below ground of like old work. So the trenches that they did will be paved over, but.
So they're probably going to be narrow.
To, yeah, to be frank, it probably won't make much of a difference.
Just hopeful. Girl injury. Thank you. We'll move on to the presentation prioritizing essential services in an era of natural disasters.
Mayor Garn will take just a second to get the PowerPoint loaded up. Just make a quick introduction while we get this set up on the computer. So we have Sean Quincy from the County Ministerial Office, Deputy CIA Sean Quincy, and also Tom Matson, our County Public Works Director here to present. So we appreciate being here, staff that conversed with them a couple of weeks ago or a month ago regarding this. And we certainly think it's an important topic for not just the county, but for Riedel and for motorists and disaster survivors.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here. Really appreciate it. Look forward to it.
Thank you, Mayor Garn's. City Council, city staff, appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you all. I believe this is the first time I'm addressing this council as a body. So I just wanted to quickly introduce myself and a little bit about myself before we get into the presentation. I moved here back in oh two from originally San Diego. Went into HSU, studied your childhood in journalism, played football, also at HSU, worked at the newspaper locally, heard some of the childish stuff. Also worked at preschool over in Ferndale. Most recently though, I was here about two and a half years ago, press conference, when there was a small natural event that I'm sure you all are aware of. It was pretty funny when we were having that press conference, there was an action that happened in the middle of it. And we had tons of media here. And I just remember that that moment as being kind of capped perfectly for the media who were here to help them realize the effects that were happening in our small community. And part of this presentation, we'll talk about some of those impacts. But I want to turn it over to Tom to introduce himself here.
Tom Matson, Director of Public Works. I came up to Humble in eighty six, getting to go to HSU to get my engineering degree. Went back down to the Bay Area, San Francisco Bay Area in nineteen ninety. Came back up as soon as I got a good job opportunity in nineteen ninety two and been here ever since. Worked for Recology, SHN Engineers, Recology, running the landfill. And then in nineteen ninety eight, I joined the county in charge of the roads. And two thousand and five, I became the director. And I've worked together lots on lots of different things.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll go ahead and get into the presentation. And the presentation centers around natural disasters and the impact that they have on our community. So over the last decade or more, Humble County has been seeing an uptick in the number and the severity of natural disasters. And these disasters run again from floods and fires, earthquakes, recently landslide over at Cleanor Creek. Some of these disasters hit specific parts of our communities, such as the earthquake that happened here in December a couple of years ago, and some are widespread throughout the community. But regardless, when these emergencies happen, local governments declare emergencies. Less frequently, the state and federal government declare emergencies. And as this council and staff are well aware, a declaration of an emergency is a public declaration, declaration to other levels of government that we don't have the resources to respond to that emergency. When the state and federal government do not follow up and declare that emergency, that shuts down our ability and funding to provide for those emergencies. It's left on the local communities to respond to that and provide funding for it. The rolling emergencies, as we're tending to see, are taking a toll on the county. And we continue to work on the budget, stable budget for this year and into the future. We're here to talk to you about where we may be headed. That don't want to affect the wall from this council, this community. Ultimately, one of the potential responses to this is increased local funding. And that could mean a sales tax coming to, something coming to the ballot in November. What form that takes, we're not sure. We're looking to pull the community and look for progress. But I want to be upfront and honest about this is one of the potential responses that we can have to help solve the problem. For sure. All right. The rest of the presentation will be dedicated to how we got here and some of the on the ground impacts that we're seeing. How we got here, story begins with the state. Over the last thirty plus years, the state has taken nearly five hundred million dollars from the county's general fund. And these are not just numbers made out of thin air. Back in the early nineties, as you may be aware, the state was unable to meet its obligations. And it carved out local property taxes to go and meet the state's obligation. So what that means for us is that we cannot use that money to meet local needs. Every year that number grows. And over this current year, that's more than twenty five million dollars of the federal funds to the general fund to address local needs. These numbers are maintained by our upper controllers office. And again, this is where the issue has started for us. That number does not include the number of state mandates that come every year, unfunded state mandates, where the state is saying, hey, we want the governments to do this on top of everything else, but we're not going to give you funding. As I'm sure that this body is well aware, state is facing a record deficit between thirty seven and seventy three billion dollars, depending on who counts the numbers. And we are in an incredibly defensive position trying to protect local funding. The governors may revise proposed hundreds of million dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars cut for funding that could be spent on emergency preparedness and transportation needs. This deficit is not going to be solved in a year. And so we're going to continue to be in this defensive position where we are worried about the state turning to the local governments. And this is how these things happen. When the state is in a bad place, one of the first places they look to is local government funding sources to meet state obligations. So we've seen this cycle happen over and over again, and we are trying to protect, doing everything we can to protect from that. And at the same time, we have some distinct challenges when it comes to preparing for local disasters and responding to emergencies. And we need to provide services for them that they have come to deserve or come to expect and deserve. And again, the rest of this presentation will be dedicated to how we can get there. But we are not the only ones that are recognizing this need to do more to prepare. The grand jury last year produced a report. You will have likely seen in the media, I think the grand jury just produced their report. But last year they produced a report on local emergency preparedness, what our community is doing. And it said in no uncertain terms that the county of Humble needs to do more to prepare for emergencies due to our topography, our tendency towards seismic issues, floods and fires, as well as climate change. That's affecting the impact of sea level rise on our community. So this is the reason that I bring this up, that this is the grand jury's public statement to our community saying, government leaders, we need to do more to prepare for natural disasters. If I leave you with one thing today, it would be that we believe that natural disasters have simply become a everyday part of life. And Tom can talk a little bit about the history that he's seen here in the last thirty plus years. But we need to, we believe that we need to reorient the way we deliver public services in the life of the way the natural disasters are impacting our community.
When I started in February nineteen ninety eight, March nineteen ninety eight, it was the first storm disaster the county declared that I was looking for the county. At that time, I look back and we were averaging a federal disaster declaration about once every three years. And in fact, there's a direct correlation from storm damage in December to March. Eighty percent of the time we get a declared disaster in December, we're going to have a declared disaster in March because that's just the way the storms are cracking. So going into twenty seventeen, the roads were still looking pretty decent. I had about a million dollars in reserve for storm damage. And twenty seventeen storm hit us to two hundred forty one million dollars in damage to our roads. Then we got hit in twenty nineteen for another fifteen million. And then from twenty twenty two through twenty twenty four, we had three storm damages. And then of course, a earthquake. And living five miles north of here, I woke up falling off my bed. And so that was four disasters. And now one recurrent local disaster for our workout in Centerville, the big landslide. So they are clearly getting stronger and harder and hitting us on a more regular basis.
And so alluded to with the county government, we're feeling the impact of that most on our roads. And that affects the ability to evacuate when an emergency hits their community. We simply live in an area where actual disasters significantly affect our roads compared relative to other infrastructure. And this slide mentions the need to hardening our roads. And again, I'll turn it over to Tom to talk more about disaster funding. But it's important to address this topic because when we get to emergencies, I'm sure that you are well aware, FEMA gets involved or Calabasas gets involved. And there could be a misperception that that's a silver bullet. There's an emergency, state has come in and they take care of everything. But that is simply not the case.
So when a disaster happens, the county has to respond. We have to respond with our guest's fund money, our maintenance money, because we have no other money to do it. And so it gets into a vicious circle of I'm using my maintenance money to front the disaster repairs. And then I'm not getting reimbursed for probably six to ten years later. And so my maintenance, my pavement condition goes down. I'm sure that you've seen reports on your pavement condition. The county is probably, is the worst among everybody agency in Humble County. And it's a vicious circle for us, because right now I'm sitting on seventy million dollars worth of damage since twenty seventeen. And I've got revenue of fifteen million dollars a year. So I'm running in the red about ten million dollars. We've cut our maintenance as far as we possibly can cut it. But when we talk about the reimbursement and the hardening, hardening is even part of the fund because we have no local money to do it. And while it is supposed to be available through FEMA, it is very difficult. You and I clearly fought the hard fought for Monument, trying to get upgrades to Monument. And it's been, well, to say it up the battle is, is to put it very mildly, trying to get the right thing done up there. And that's the kind of thing the county has over a hundred times, hundred places throughout the county right now that are existing storm damage sites that we're in the process of repairing. So all we do in an emergency is emergency opening. We open the road, usually just to one lane. And we go from there and then we go into the approval process. Generally takes three years on a good day to get the final approvals to go to construction. And again, we're fronting the money and then waiting six to ten years to get reimbursed. So for example, the picture of Bear Road this year, residents there were stranded for two weeks while we scrambled with contractors trying to reopen the rest. A big hillside came down, blew up the culvert. Culvert washed down the road, the road turned into the river and the road said bye bye. And so this is the kind of thing that we have to face out on the county roads. Just went through this off bracket. So you can see we've got the PCI up here by counties only the fifty eight, counties in California. Eight, ten years ago, we were up in that fair range. We were pretty much trying to hold our own. But over the last few years, we've dropped significantly because we have no money to keep our maintenance. We're now into the poor condition. And the importance of this is if you're in the good to very good condition, you've minimized your maintenance costs. You're repairing your road instead of repairing your entire ceiling. That's the way I like to put it. So you do a lot of story seals. We do a lot of story seals. We combine our bids and we get a better cost for the entire, for all the cities in the county. Those are the things that you can do when your roads are in good condition that keeps them in good condition for a long time. With our existing funding, we're actually projecting that we're going to be in the very poor failed within ten years. That means our pavement is just going to be worn. And in certain places it already is, the PCI is an average. So just for example, PCI one hundred, as you know, probably know, is a brand new. We have very few of those, but we try to keep them in good shape as we can. A few years ago, we were in the mid sixties, just in our average road, county road in the mid sixties. Right now, this is where we're at in the PCI range and we're actually at forty nine, but forty five, forty nine. They're starting to really get bad. You can see lack of maintenance. We don't have the people to call the ditches. We don't have the people to seal the cracks. And they just get worse and faster. And so we're projecting that if we wanted to get to PCI in seventy and ten years, it would take five hundred million value. Set value to county loan system is over a billion dollars. We know we're not going to get that, but we need to make progress, starting to go back in the positive direction. So here's completely failed roads for not gravel yet, but they will be gravel curdled. And they're much more expensive to repair than just putting like slurs in. So without that news, I'll turn it back.
And I'd like to also just mention, if you go back to the graph that shows the PCI and all their six counties. Each of those six counties have dedicated local funding sources for roads. And some of those jurisdictions have multiple funding sources. So it's no surprise, no funding, no better service on your roads. But this leads us to our ask of this council. Back in last summer, we polled the community, round a little over six hundred likely voters because our board was considering placing a sales tax in March ballot dedicated to emergency services, roads and other services. And what came back was this set of priorities. And as you can see, if you look at the priorities, it's kind of a disparate set of services ranging from road repair, less than state federal funds, homeless services, transportation, climate action, including transit. And so we just don't have enough funding to fund all these services. These are all obviously very important services for the community. But now with such limited pool of despair. Of what the community's priorities are. And so our ask of this council and the community is to, we have a survey online on our website and to let us know which among these priorities are the most important for the community. We're talking a lot about realty office because that's where the county is seeing the most impact. But that might not be the community's priority. And so we want to know what the community's priorities are and what these priorities are. You will all likely be receiving a piece of mail be in your mailbox this morning, sometime by the end of this week. Again, QR code and everything to the survey. We're really trying to do a lot of community outreach as we prepare our budget for this year and beyond. So we can fully stick back to services that we can provide. And so I also have another ask that we would have council specifically is that if there are any other groups in your community that we think would benefit from hearing this message in this presentation, have questions for us, please let us know. We're more than happy to go out and talk with anybody here. But with that, I want to thank you again for having us. We'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you both. That was very impressively enlightening. We appreciate you coming.
No questions. I've got the survey up on the honor.
Wilson? Were there any? Yes.
Sure. Well, Brief Industry, Riedel. Definitely the budget constraints can't be overstated, what we're seeing. You're also not going to see anything from the state coming for any of this because they're trying desperately to put some massive bond measures on the November ballot. There's likely going to be three of them. And they're trying to determine priorities right now because there was a list of, I had it one time, I think it was ten, possibly more proposed. Instead of paring down that list, they're just combining them to make them into three. It's going to be huge. I'm talking tens of billions of dollars when you ask for roads, for climate, for schools, for housing, for everything. As part of the budget process, my prediction, if I were to make one, is they're not going to invest any extra money in this budget, in any of those priorities because that dilutes their message to the voters that we desperately need your money more. It's cynical. It's how they work. And if you don't believe me, I'll give you lots of examples. But so we're not going to see any money come in that direction. Putting a bond measure on, which I think we're going to need to do locally, I would just really encourage to promote the heck of it as, A, we're not the state. If we pass a bond measure, you're going to see some effects. You're going to see some roads fade. You're going to see something done. You're not going to see ten years down the road everyone saying, didn't we pass a bond? What the heck happened to all that? I would also be pushing it really hard on the natural disasters aspect. We all know that one. I have the video from that press conference with that earthquake. And it was probably a full minute before any of us could breathe again after just that aftershock. It's just so in your bones, you know, with every movement. So those are things that Humble County residents, I think, would respond to, would understand. And we're going to have to push really hard to get them out there to vote because for some really unexplainable reason, people seem to be very cynical about the political process these days. And so it's going to be really difficult. I think we just need to make sure as a local community, we're messaging them together again and push it hard. I push hard against the state on, they have screwed up so many bond measures. I honestly don't think they're going to manage to pass their bond measures, not after Prop one and what happened with that one. And I think they're also going to be asking the voters to relieve them from the GAN limit, which is basically asking the voters to say, we need more ability to mess with your money. Just trust us, give us this authority. I don't think that's going to go well either. But anyway, I think locally, we've got a really good shot at it. I don't want to pay any more taxes, but I really would like that. So we do have mutual interest. And again, keeping it local, keeping that push together and making the emphasis that you will see results from it with the local bond measure. We're not the state.
Thanks. Thank you. You should lie there.
Yeah.
We're very lucky that not in this capacity, we're very like sharing with every county. If I may, Mayor, tack on to what Ms. Wolf said. The, one of the, as Chair mentioned, one of the benefits of having local measures like this is that it cannot be taken by the state. There is transparency and accountability with these measures. Your elected officials are phone call away, emailed away, a meeting at the coffee shop away to say what's going on with this. This, any measure that would be placed on the ballot would come with an advisory committee made above citizens and other public officials, making in an accountability piece there. And there's also, there's the ability for residents don't like the way that things are going. If there's something in place and it shouldn't have, it will hold the ability for local residents to put something on the ballot table to remove it. There's a lot of local accountability that comes with these local measures as well.
We appreciate everything you said. We appreciate, uh, Sharon, what you said. I think the whole not the state is a very good message to send out there. Um, thank you for coming. And if we find someone, if I find someone, a group, you know, that will benefit, I will definitely reach out because there are a lot of messages that need to get out and we can get them focused. Um, I think people will hear it if it's put the right way and focused on something that will help them. So I appreciate you coming, you both.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Now we move on to the presentation from Recology. It'll be the annual rate adjustment to solid waste franchise agreement, page fifty-five in our packet.
Thank you, Mayor Garnett, members of the council. And I've been looking to, uh, inform the mayor earlier that we're, we're going to pull this item from the, from the agenda. Come back, uh, at the council's next meeting. Unfortunately, there was an error in the, uh, printing of the agenda. We apologize for that materially to make it into the packet. Um, so discussing that with Recology, we're just going to have the meeting, uh, with the agenda.
Well, that, that's fine. Didn't notice anyone from Recology. Okay, well then that is bold. So we will move on to presentation. Adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five operational and capital budget. Page sixty-one of our packets. City manager.
So, uh, thank you, Mayor Garnett and members of the council. I think, um, we're going to set it apart when it does take a minute on the systems, a little bit slower than normal. Um, I, I really want to thank Travis, uh, and the entire finance department for their work on, on this. You know, I think we have the, the budget dialed in. Uh, here in the city, there certainly are challenges, uh, that we're facing. Uh, but the work of the council over the past several years has meant that we have a robust reserve. Uh, it's meant that we have seen additional revenues, not just through uh, sales taxes, but through innovative approaches, uh, particularly related to cannabis. Uh, this budget year potentially has the potential of being a banner year for cannabis revenues. Um, some other, uh, jurisdictions aren't able really to say there's a net, um, benefit, uh, to the, uh, taxpayers of the city. But I'm proud to be able to say that it does and happens, uh, since the inception of the program. Um, and so there's, well, there are concerns particularly related to, uh, law enforcement funding, uh, escalating costs associated with, uh, having our own, uh, independent, uh, police department. Um, we are in the best position the city's ever been, uh, to be able to, to manage these, these problems. And so that's a real credit to the council, uh, for fiscal discipline and for, again, creative revenue ideas involved on it. Uh, but I, I want to hand this over to Travis to, to give the presentation for this year's fiscal budget.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Garnett and council members. As we approach the close of the current fiscal year, I'm excited to present the recommended budget. Let's see the priorities and plans. The city's budget development process followed a well-defined timeline, commencing in early March with the distribution of comprehensive budget for use to department heads. Departmental budget requests when submitted and reviewed by the finance department. In April, this information forms the basis for the initial draft budget presented to the city manager for approval. During a dedicated council study session in May, each budgetary fund anticipated staffing level and capital pressures are meticulously reviewed for the upcoming fiscal year. The culmination of this process occurs in June with the staff presentation of the recommended budget for option for the following year beginning July first. At the May twenty-first city council meeting, the council established five key priorities for fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five. These priorities focus on public safety stuff. Ensuring adequate staffing levels to maintain public safety throughout the city. Public works infrastructure projects. Implementing critical infrastructure projects to improve the city's public works system. Economic development plan and execution. We can't establish economic development plan to foster economic growth. Street planning implementation, enacting a comprehensive street planning strategy. And finally, community engagement and parks development. Acting engagement to local community, particularly young people and the development of parks and recreational facilities. On May twenty-first, the city council received a detailed presentation on the recommended budget for the upcoming fiscal year. This presentation included a comprehensive overview of the budget. So the city's organizational chart, a summary of the capital and special projects, and the associated budget calendar. The proposed budget of nineteen point five million is categorized into operating expenditures, debt service, in capital and special projects. Projected revenues for the fiscal year are eighteen point two million, with approximately one point two million coming from unassigned fund balances. These meticulously calculated figures clearly explain the city's financial standing for the upcoming year. The recommended budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five reflects significant increase of ten point seven million dollars or a hundred and twenty-two percent compared to the previous fiscal year. A key driver of this growth is the city's successful acquisition of a twelve point eight million dollar drinking water state revolving fund ring, secured through the regional water quality control board. Over eleven million dollars of this strength is designated for construction of the water distribution system project, which is anticipated for completion within the upcoming fiscal year and is detailed in the capital and special projects summary. Excluding special and capital projects, large budget allocation remains a police department, with the budget exceeding one point six million dollars. Revenue projections for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five are expanded to eighteen point two million dollars, representing a significant increase of a hundred and thirty-nine percent compared to the previous fiscal year. This substantial growth mirrors the increase in expenditures and is primarily attributed to anticipated reimbursements associated with the water distribution system project. However, the city anticipates a decrease in measured J sales tax revenues due to the scheduled quarter percent reduction taking effect from January twenty twenty-five. Conversely, cannabis revenue decreased by nearly sixty percent. This positive forecast is driven by the stability of operations among our Denver class total cultivators and the expansion of cannabis business within the rebuild business part from where question happened. The city's general fund primarily relied on combination of property taxes, property tax and move vehicle license fee, sales taxes and cannabis taxes. For the upcoming fiscal year, general fund revenue projections are at one point seven million, reflecting a six percent increase or about a hundred thousand dollars more than the previous fiscal year. This anticipated growth in general fund revenues largely attributed to the projected rise in cannabis tax collections, despite the expected decline in measured J sales tax revenue as previously assessed. The general fund served as the city's primary operating fund, providing financial resources for central services and core operations. Revenues within the general fund are unreserved and can be allocated towards various areas, including police services, general government, operations, management, and specific capital projects. For the upcoming fiscal year, the general fund is budgeted at one point nine nine million dollars. Police services represented the largest funding allocation, accounting for one point four million or seventy-three percent of the total general fund. Capital projects and city administration allocated three percent and ten percent of the budget. The fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five capital projects expected to allocate fourteen point one seven million dollars for various capital and special projects throughout the city. Funding for these projects will be drawn from designated sources, including the general fund, the parks per capita fund earmarked for the dog park projects, parks capital fund supporting the Eel River Trail from Gateway beautification initiatives, SB one fund dedicated to street roadwork, the ARPU fund utilizing federal COVID relief funds, and sewer and water capital project applications. This year's capital budget represents a significant increase of two hundred and ninety percent compared to the previous fiscal year. The water distribution system project is the primary driver of this growth, counting for over eleven million dollars of the output. The city of Riedel organizational chart officially represents the city's governance structure, various components interact. The citizens form a foundation of the charter. Citizens elect the council members who represent their interests. The city council is comprised of elected representatives and the city council established policy for the city. The planning commission is an appointed body that serves as an advisory group, offering recommendations to the city council on matters related to development and land use. The city staff encompasses the employees responsible for the day-to-day operation of the city government, ensuring the smooth functioning of various departments. And contractors for individuals hired by the city are performed specific tasks or provide specialized services, such as engineering or legal counsel. They all fall under the category. The city of Riedel is budgeted a total of twenty-three point nine five full-time employees for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. This records a decrease of one point seven full-time employees compared to the previous fiscal year. This staffing adjustment reflects specific changes, including the elimination of the man and the analyst position and one utility worker position. Additionally, the community development director position has been transitioned to a full time. I want to thank the city council for participating in the budget process and continued commitment to fiscal responsibility. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the city of Riedel staff for their support in building this budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone wants.
Thank you. Try himself. Very, very well presented and we appreciate everything you've done and staff has done. Um, you brought it together, you made it make sense and we appreciate that. Are there any questions from, you know, and I concur with the mayor. Thank you for all your work.
Just, um, it's just, I'm going to jump in there. There was, there's some recommendations, you know, the, oh, the next item would be agenda. Is that included for the police officer incentives and, um, is that included in the budget?
So I'll, I'll jump in on that. It is not specifically included in this budget. However, uh, we have a number of vacancies in the police department. Our budget assumptions when we set the budget is that vacant positions are set at the C-step level, hold that, it's full family benefits. Um, our experience is that that never, they rarely ever occurs. So particularly when we're taking somebody from the, through the academy, um, and displacement, um, you know, typically they're not going to have uh, family level health insurance and they're typically going to be started at A-step. Um, so, so the next agenda is basically salary savers within the budget, we think, that that's going to be, uh, out there for the year.
Thank you, House member Wilson, House member Wolf. Um, anyone in the, um, public? Any questions? No emails. No, good. Hands raised. Not that I would get that in my head until the beginning. Go hands raised. Okay, thank you. Um, and so I think then are we, for motion to adopt? Please, City Manager, motion. Second, I, we have a motion, the second to adopt. Please vote. Motion carries five zero. Now we will move on to the adoption and we the adoption of a recruitment retention program related to the police department. City Manager, page eighty-five in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garnett, and to the council. As, as the council is aware, uh, Chief Greg Allen has resigned to take the position of the chief of police for help of Humboldt. Uh, we're very excited for him and that he's a very good fit for the position and wish him well in that important role. Um, in the meantime, at the last council meeting, the council confirmed the appointment of Jeff Connor, our chief of police as our interim, uh, chief of police. Uh, and so, uh, we are, you know, in a, uh, process of trying to, uh, build up the police department. And, uh, in, uh, across the nation, really, and including here in Humboldt County, uh, staffing, the situation in law enforcement is changing. And so, uh, some would label it crisis and certainly, uh, that, um, is becoming more and more likely to be, uh, deemed a crisis as time goes on and positions remain unbilled. Uh, but this item, uh, seeks to, to basically address that through at least one of the tools in the council's toolbox, which is incentive, uh, pay. Although what we have seen, uh, here in Humboldt County and elsewhere is that this is now becoming a market condition. Uh, and so the, the items and recommendations before the council uh, really meet the bar of other agencies. We, we're not recommending at this time exceeding, uh, that bar. Uh, but we want to meet that bar. Um, we certainly don't want to get into a giant, uh, bidding anymore because the reality is probably Riedel will, will lose that, that, that cap of the time. Again, as Travis just presented in, in this council's budget, uh, the police department consumes, um, seventy-three percent of the city's general fund obligation. That's very, very high. So the city is, uh, putting up money and, and prioritizing the police department above and beyond most other, uh, organizations where that general fund commitment is more in the fifty, fifty-five percent range for, for typical police department in a city. Um, so we're doing everything we can to, uh, provide the resources. Historically, we have been doing that. Chief Connor, uh, oversaw several reforms, uh, including the update of the information technology system for the police department, um, uh, staffing upgrades. Uh, you know, we have, uh, community services officer handles code and miscellaneous minor, um, uh, issues to help free up officers' time. Uh, we went from, uh, I believe about five or so officers up to, uh, you know, functionally one point, uh, seven or eight, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, so we, you know, the, the department has been, has been successful in the past and then it's about getting the city back into that position again. Uh, so what is, uh, part of this, this, part of what informs this, this situation is that, um, you know, to bring somebody through the academy and then they have to go through a field training officer position where they're basically monitored and, and, uh, and they're accompanied essentially wherever they go to get out of that MTO process from beginning to end. It is over sixty thousand dollars for each individual officer. Uh, out of the academy, through the academy into, to the board. And so there, the also, the other condition is that, uh, law enforcement generally have uh, a very high rate of folks who go through the academy, uh, get into the position and then separated from their career altogether. And so we hired most other professions. Uh, people find out pretty quickly whether it's right for them in the first year or two. Um, and so there is a significant amount of investment that a city has to make uh, in order to bring somebody, you know, into the fold of law enforcement. And so therefore it makes sense, you know, from a financial standpoint, strictly speaking, uh, to offer lateral incentives. Um, uh, the city has never used an incentive to lateral somebody into the department. However, we have lost, um, at least two officers recently, uh, to lateral incentives from other agencies. And so we helped pay and train them and then they, uh, went off, which is their right to do. And we want to encourage, uh, all of the city employees to, uh, to find their happy spot and, uh, and find success in their, in their careers. Um, so offering the incentive, uh, in terms of helping to both bring in a new chief of police and also potentially lateral, this makes sense. Uh, and again, it's a market condition. Uh, part of the, the program here though is also to pay respect and then provide equity for the existing officers. Uh, part of the, the program here goes also to pay respect and then provide equity for the existing officers that we do have. Um, so right now today, our staffing level and the chief of honor can correct me if I'm wrong on this, three full time officers, which would include the chief. Uh, and also in particular, uh, one, um, uh, full time community services officer, again, provides that direct levels for. Uh, to the officers in the field, uh, isn't just, uh, in the office or in part time, but, but out in the field quite often. And so, uh, you know, typically we, we break this up by marketing unit, in this case, the department itself is, is in a, in a crisis. Or, excuse me, is nearing a crisis, so I would like to correct my slaw there. And so we would like to, uh, provide this incentive so that we can see we can lateral people in, uh, and provide an extra incentive for the chief of police position. Uh, we did rather low key blow the, the chief of police position locally in hopes of pulling in a candidate. Uh, that recruitment was not a success, so we're going to be floating that again, we'd like to float with the incentive. Uh, and do a broader statewide advertising for that particular position. Uh, so existing law enforcement would receive, uh, seventy five hundred dollars annually, uh, for three years spread across their twenty six pay periods a year. And then our CSO would receive six thousand dollars in a similar, uh, fashion, fifty thousand dollar bonus. Uh, would be, and again, we're just matching what the other agencies do, which would be ten thousand dollars upfront on the first pay period. And the rest of it is split over two and a half years. Um, with that, happy to, uh, answer any questions, but the recommended motion. Uh, that staff, uh, is, is recommending is to authorize the city manager to implement a recruitment protection program for the police department, including one fifty thousand dollar hiring. Incentive for the chief of police, one fifty thousand dollar lateral incentive for a police officer. Uh, both paid over two and a half years, further a retention bonus for the existing forty hour per week sworn law enforcement, seventy five hundred dollars annually for up to three years. And one retention bonus for the community services officer, six thousand dollars annually for years. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, city manager. And staff. Are there any questions? Then. Yeah, I, you were explaining how we're going to afford this, is that we can see it on paper? You know, you're saying because of the extra positions that are open and how that you're figuring that out, except you didn't have it. We can see it how it figures out.
I'd be happy to have our finance director, uh, produce a spreadsheet so that the guests can see it.
Okay, and I don't know if this is authentic, tell me if it is, how, where did we advertise? Our office, um, these two.
Uh, so we advertised locally and, uh, journal and then we also, there's, uh, personal phone calls made and, uh. It focused on the, to the police department to, to chit chat with the departments, it's publicly advertised. Uh, they were directly sent, uh, to each of the law enforcement agencies, HRs, and also directly to the departments as well.
In, in the area.
In there.
And are we going to think about going outside of the area? That, that like, um, we never ran into anything like that, like we used to do in Western City Magazine and we would. Like a fourth or half page ad and, you know, we go.
Yeah, so, uh, so. I don't know if we would utilize the magazines, but there's a lot of online publication where you instantaneously can display, uh, the advertisements and. Uh, so the plan would be yes, a California certification.
Okay, if I'd like to see us go out of the area a little too, and, um, have we ever thought, I mean, would hiring a recruiter, recruiter or would that? You know, somebody else would benefit from getting people to come in, or I'm not sure how expensive that is.
Yeah, I mean, there, there would be a cost, uh, associated with recruiter, I think, um. Frankly, we're probably going to find more success for cheaper costs through, through the, through those mailers. Um, than, than, than anything else, recruiter is a potential option. Um, and we're certainly going to be looking into that for the interim role because Chief Connor. Um, uh, will be unavailable towards the end of August, so we're most ninety percent sure that we will have a second interim in the meantime. Uh, during that period, it could be internally or externally, but, um, uh, but those costs generally range in the twenty thousand dollars they give.
Well, suppose we've been out with the recruiter and we could just do it while we, without the, that, you know, albeit. Sign on bonuses and we could get somebody because we're going out of the area, somebody that might, wouldn't we want to try to act and what we did to bonuses or that because?
Um, you know, we, we could look into that, you know, but I think, I think, I think at this point, because the, um. These are hiring incentives, which have become kind of the market norm in law enforcement. Um, is, is kind of, is going to be a necessary progression, um, no matter what we do.
Would that be it? Yeah.
What do you say? From the internal or is it from an existing?
Yeah, so it would be a lateral from an existing, uh, agency, somebody who's already been through, uh, their certification through the academy for direct TO. Somebody who's, who's already pre-trained, again, that cost the city is, is, you know, sixty thousand dollars. Um, so that, that's the concept.
Well, is, is. The la- lateral person doesn't require the sixty thousand dollars. They're not moving to the academy and.
Sure, they're already ready basically to go, uh, law enforcement, e- even when you switch from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, you have to go through a pretty extensive background. That, that we do, you know, separately, independently of the, of the prior jurisdiction, uh, but, um, uh. Uh, but yeah, it would be, it would be net neutral in theory to the city, but it. Uh, because we're basically taking the training costs and gliding them instead of training somebody through to lateral wings speed. And then, you know, there's also, uh, costs that are not that easy to capture, particularly the MTO portion. Uh, because the, the officers are being trained in a practical, street manner that does detract from, from the training officers. Um, you know, day to day law enforcement role.
Does the, the academy, uh, are we putting out a thing to the academy to try to get someone? This was bought up the last council meeting to get a, to get somebody in that, that even.
So, so we are working on that and, uh, Chief Connor can give any more specifics without getting too specific.
So I can add to what the city manager, I mean, the lateral transfer is not only somebody who's been through the academy, completed ETO, they've also completed probation. And now they're at least a poster candidate, so depending on what department, they've been a police officer for at least a year and in many cases eighteen months. So they have some experience and they've decided this is a job that they're going to continue with, so. It is hopeful that if we do the lateral, they're not going to turn around and decide six months later that law enforcement is not, not for them, as we had the experience, um, in, in our. Um, currently, the number of people attending the police academy is extremely low, um. I'm not sure how many are already enrolled in the academy that starts, uh, orientation is on Saturday and education starts on Monday. But the last few classes have been in the, the low teens, um, and so just about everybody who is enrolled in that academy. Is already hired by a local department. Um, so there is not a rule of potential regret to this. That's changed significantly since I was starting as chief, we used to be able to do that and we just really can't anymore. Um, we currently have one, one recruit who we came in and did some paperwork today. This woman here, future, who is going to be sponsored by the Riedel Police Department and, uh, this company academy. We have another young man who would like to work for us, his background's not completely, he's going to start the academy. Uh, even though he hasn't been hired by the department, hopefully nobody coaches him away from us, hopefully we give it. Is there anything else I can, can add to that?
The, um. Uh, there was another question, it's certainly one mind, what, what you're saying, um. The, in fact, I think in fact, if it proves, uh, on the degrees of, of counsel on the wall. Then we would get a, reach out to a candidate recruiter, uh, for the, you know, this, if it costs twenty thousand, well, it costs, that's. Seems fairly low in comparison to the, the offset of finding these people. But really, there's a lot, lot of local people working in Riedel from local advertising means. The, um. I, I'm not sure if he wants to be a police officer at this point in time, but, um, that's, that's what I think a recruiter would help us. Um, they're experiencing this all over the United States. And so somebody with, with some expertise in this field, I think would benefit the city. And, and this is, I know we talked about this previously, well, not talk about it, but went through this. At some time back before Chief Connor's and, and all that we went through. Uh, that this is never going to be an end to this process of people coming, uh, to it and all, getting experience and wanting to move on. And since we put this into our, you know, priorities, priorities. That, um, safety and the, uh, particularly the police department. Was, one of them was our, was our, I think our top item, I mean, first to everybody, but, but on that is a thing we want to do and so. Uh, with that in mind, that, that would become a priority of, to just. That's number one, you know, and that we, we've got to get these people here to, to. Follow along the lines that we're going to resign back onto the county and that other cities have done. I think it's foolish, you know, that's going to impact everything else along the lines, why Riedel's a city. You know, it's going to impact whether people want to come here and have businesses. Uh, recently we just had the vandalism of, of some of our beautification projects in, in the city here. Um, again, Council of Woodalls, um, finding the things and so to say, the police force needs to go out. Be on the lookout, put their priorities on, um. Uh, plants, I mean, I hope they're looking for that, but the other part of just having businesses that can be comfortable with. Wanting to come here to be a business without police force seven. Uh, I know if I was in business, I would certainly go to another direction to come here, so. I, I'm asking that we really, really emphasize this as, uh, every day when you come in, uh. That's a priority that is addressed towards this police process. That's all I have, anybody else just to comment on that, I appreciate it.
Thank you. There about that.
Thank you, um, as, as far as incentives go, I, I don't think we've got choice, really it seems like that's. What everybody's doing and it's what it takes and it's the norm, nothing that should take place over recruiters, that I think, I agree with what everybody's saying. Obviously, police staffing and, and helping safety is, was one of our top priorities, so. I think we're going to just have to suck it up and do what we're going to do, let's, but no questions, I just, I think we have to do the incentive thing, whenever we use a recruiter.
Yeah, I can follow, you said.
You did, uh, do that, um. Just, yeah, more comment and a question, the, the recruiter thing, I think is, um, seen its day as far as professions like. Police officers, especially in bigger cities are using them and they're going to recruit people from bigger cities because small cities are rude. Pay much like being, um, I'm not against that, but I think that the incentives are definitely. In their system, trying to find a way to get around it, but it's going to be to our advantage.
Just though I will, I will be able to get some contracts right on outside, so, okay, thank you. Um, and I, um. Think that, um, I agree with the, with, with recruitment bonus and the retention bonus, I think, or the. The recruitment incentive issue. Um, I think that that is where we are. I don't think that, if you look at the big picture, we're a small town, we don't have hers. There are a lot of reasons why not to come to Riedel for the police department, so offering an incentive. Especially when everyone else around us offers an incentive, just things to be the most reasonable thing to do. If we have the ability to do it, um, I think it is absolutely. And I think it's just the smart thing to do, I spoke with, uh, city manager, uh, months ago about this because. You can just see the writing on the wall, you see what's happening. And we need to do as much as we can do if we want a police force. We need to do whatever we need to do to get that police force and to get. To do the incentives, to get the laterals and that means we'll have people who are ready to go, they don't need a training officer, so now. Instead of having two plus one, uh, two plus a trainee, we have three, we have three officers that are. Able to go out and do what they are supposed to do. And so I fully, full throat, as we'll get to you in here, the, the right mood. So, um, are there any public, oh, Sharon? There's not a lot of public here, so.
I know. Sharon, still at Fender Street. Um, so I think that, the, the bonuses, the recruitment stuff, the poaching is where we're at. I mean, that's where all the agencies are, I'm afraid, and my department is seeing it with behavioral health. You know, everybody's screaming law enforcement, we all need them, um, not enough people are going into law enforcement, it's a really hard job. You do a really hard job. Um, so I think the, I think the bonuses are unfortunately where we're at and we're going to have to pay, but I have a question. On the bonuses, if someone, if we're paying it out over two and a half years, what if the person leaves after a year? Do they have to agree to stay with us for two and a half years or can they take the portion that's already been paid to the bonus and go off some of those?
Uh, so it would be paid up for pay period, so if they separated before that period, it's not, they would receive the remainder.
Okay, but they would get the ten thousand dollars upfront and then the ones that they traded. The county has a, has a program, CalSpect, for social workers, which will pay some of their college expenses. If they will agree to come work for the county and for anybody listening, for the love of God, come and work for the county. But, um, they have to agree to workforce for a period of time to pay that off, they can't leave early unless they're willing to pay that money back at that time. Um, now they, the second they hit that period of time, we lose them, they go somewhere else. But we've got it for that period of time, you'd have two and a half years if there was a way to, um, you know, condition that perhaps or incentivize. Somehow that they stay for that period of time. Um, and then for recruiting, we're, we're going to be poaching from other places, of course, um, and if we could send it out, especially with bonuses added. Send it out to outlined areas, I would advertise to the large cities and to the places and advertise all the benefits of here. You're not in a giant urban environment at the police force, this is a small community, you can get to know your community. You can, you know, do all these wonderful things, it's not a hundred and eight degrees here, we have a coastal breeze, a beautiful winter off hours, you know, you could go surfing. It, it's, you know, lean into all the reasons why you'd want to come here and then I would also add, when you're advertising it, advertise the housing costs. The reasons we can't recruit medical people into here is even at the high salaries and medical get, they can't afford to buy. We've recruited medical into the county and then they've had to turn us down because they can't afford to buy a place here, even at those salaries. So I'd be leaning into the fact that we have lower housing comparatively to other areas. And, heck, send them out a, a resource link, links to properties for sale or for rent, here's a place where you are real trips or something. But in order to get them up here, you're going to have to deal with the housing situation as well. Um, but sure, recruit, they have poached, they have, get them, thanks, thank you. They provide your budget.
Well, good evening, council, um, I just want to say from the county's perspective that the recruitment, hiring and recruitment process. Has been difficult and has not resulted in much for our county and, um, previous, Kyle, I'm sure. Is aware that, um, it's the recruiting agency. is aware that um it's the recruiting agencies are very costly and they don't result in much. But I do would say that if you tell a story about your city um and what it's like, um, hiring someone to create you a robust ad that you can um digitally um push out everywhere and in different areas. It has been very successful for the county doing um something like that. We hire, we've had recruit recruiting agencies that have zero results and we do ours. So I would just think twice before you spend that money, your incentive policy that you're creating, you're going to have to. Um, the county had to go there. Everybody else had to go there. So um, good luck and it is a very tough job. And uh, police are not readily available hardly anywhere. So good luck.
Where where do you, question please. Where do you post, where do you advertise when you would make this platter, we're sure that says this is Nirvana place to go. I mean, where do you, where do you and where do they see that?
So Kyle, uh, it's been call RCO, Salsa and Dr. Patti, and uh she can help him with where we put that stuff out. Um, but I know we send it, we send it to tons of places. There's tons of governmental, um, you know, places that you can do advertising for jobs and and they can push it out. Most um, um, Florida supervisors offices or county offices for every county um has. Um, you know, it's something you can send to the county and they can put it out over their social media. That's something that they do a lot. You know, everybody wants cops, so you know, they're not going to be like stoner about it, but they'll so and and I know Patti would help us link up and give you all those things, which you probably already know. I just don't want you to waste your money on her.
Good, it's good, it's good info. Yeah. My voice.
And I mean, I like Christmas. Definitely put that on my cookies, all my cookies. Um, so um, I think that, um, well, so I will. Are there any more? Any emails? Any handbrakes? Okay, um, so I'd like to have a motion to adopt and authorize the city manager to implement a hiring bonus incentive rather. Um, with fifty thousand over two and a half years, retention uh bonus for seventy-five hundred over three years and for the community services officer, six thousand dollar bonus over three years. That fall in?
Awesome.
We have a motion, there's that, sorry. Motion under that. So motion carries back there. And so, and I I want to thank um you both for giving us that, you know, the information is my gift. I'm sure our city manager is on to it. Um, but I like, I do like especially the and one advertisement sending it out.
We got one of your chair's phone?
Uh, so we, yeah, um, although we are having more discussion about that on there's exceptions to the hiring freeze, which are public safety, but you have to get work first.
Thank you. And so now we come to council reports. Mayor, what's that?
Thank you. I attended our Ad hoc. We had a meeting about the uh cowboy or such TGS town property debacle. Um, I also attended the soft ribbon cutting for the Eagle River Trail, which is, uh, city manager says was lovely and um, just couldn't have been evented. Really happy about that. Um, we have the first meeting of the Parks Master Plan Ad hoc Committee, including two seventh graders who did pretty well.
Yes.
Who did. They're still seven graders, but they behaved well and actually got some really good um input from them and um it was just really nice to sit at a table with city council, fire district, school board and local children. I mean, that felt like a win in another sub. So um, nice one. And then if you all have checked your boxes, we've got a um recently revised and drafted copy of our parks survey. Um, that we will be meeting about again, but I want to keep you all in the loop. This past Saturday, uh, Mayor Garnson and I both um attended the Trails Summit, the Hubble County Trail Summit up in Eureka, and that was a really nice time to just be there and represent Riedel. We got so many compliments about how good things are looking, how nice it is to see us at these events and things like that. And um, we had good swag too. We went in, that's fine. I think we did. Uh, let's see, um, upcoming Chamber of Commerce is meeting this Friday. We have a change of location. We are meeting in the offices of the Town of Scotia. I don't know the address, but it's right on the main drag there across from we care. Um, also this Friday, our lovely finance director and I are hitting the streets to drum up interest in our facade improvement program. So I get to go meet with some local businesses, not that, trying to spruce up downtown. Um, the bike book is coming, that is June fifteenth from eleven AM to one PM at the Rio Duck School parking lot. It's a really fun event. You can decorate your bike. You can learn basic bike repairs. There's a bike parade uh led by our lovely police department. So it's free. And lastly, June thirteenth, I will go to the fire district board of directors meeting and the school board meeting.
Um, nothing to report. I do want, I have a question back to the police thing. It's just, um, why, and I know you can't recruit eighteen-year-olds onto the police force, but I've yet to see um any of the law enforcement um departments at career directors talking to kids saying, hey, this is what we can offer you. This is what you have to do to get there before the colleges and universities kind of take them towards, I hate to say, the the occupation. So I've been several kids reaching out and I've yet to see one. So I don't know if it's an idea. The military is there, but they do very um, but other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Councilor, what's that?
Yeah, I, I have a case, a WMA. Uh, back to the uh, police department, police to pick it to Sam, that um, I noticed a daunting task. I appreciate the effort that it's going to take for you to do this, you know, to pull us off and uh if it's even dual, and there's a lot of, what do you call it? A lot, a lot of opposition just because of the situation that we're in. But um, all the effort that you're making is appreciated by the local municipal council in Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm really welcome. I'm really well. Um, and so, thank you. Um, I also well, that's uh Mayor Proton with that, with attended the Redwood Trail, the Humboldt Summit, Humboldt Trail Summit. Um, what I'd like to put out for um anyone listening and to the council is um, we would really like Riedel to be a part of the Great Redwood Trail, the Eagle River new uh non-motorized trail will be a spur of it. There's, if you go to greatredwoodtrailplan.org, you can actually go to their interactive map. And you can, you can make the suggestion, come across two eighty-three, go down at the first of them, come up, go down or come down across the bridge and go down um Wildwood down into the downtown business area. And you can literally map those, that spot, that trail out, that spur. And make that comment. They extended the period to make comments until July third. So any comments that we make, that we can make as a, as a city, but really as individuals so that we know, they know that Riedel as a community is involved and wants this. And this will be a boon to Riedel. We are a part of it. They, we can have them come and do um the presentation again that shows the um economic um benefit to coming here, to having the trail come through here. So um, I just wish that everyone, if you can, go to greatredwoodtrailplan.org and make a comment. Tell your friends to make a comment, tell your neighbors to make a comment. We want to be a part of this. We almost missed it and they extended it. So we should take this opportunity to go and make our comments and make our voices heard. Because I think that it would be really good for Riedel in this area. Um, and I think that's all. I will not be here on June eighteenth. Yeah. Mayor Proton will have it. Um, and so that's all I have is there a motion to uh have a motion, is there a second? That motion is second meeting adjourned to June eighteenth.